Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, 7:00 PM. Board Meeting Room 39 Bank Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia 24531. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Mr. Dudley? Mr. Ingram?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Here. Thank you so much. Would you join me now in a moment of silence? Thank you. If you're physically able, would you stand and let us say our pledge of allegiance together?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so kindly. All right, we move now to item number five. Are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
I'd like to make a motion to add the following items to the agenda. Blue Ridge Innovation Corridor Letter of Support and Funding Match as Item 7M. And then we'll do the Environmental Commission Partnership as Item 7N.
Thank you. Is there support for the motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ingram. It's been moving up with second. We will amend the agenda with 7M and 7N respectively. Any discussion? Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. I'll now call for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Height. Moving up with second, we would approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? If not, cast your votes, please. Thank you so much. Motion passes unanimously. We move to item seven, the Consent Agenda. What's the board's pleasure?
I make the motion we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Moving up with second, we would approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. All right, that takes us down to agenda item number eight, Presentations. Let's see. This is obviously one of the highlights of our meeting anytime we get to honor and love on the community and their accomplishments. And it lends a little positivity to these meetings. Keeping the lights on for Pennsylvania County Schools. Is there someone here to represent? Come on up, sweetheart. Ms. Gore, United Way. We also have Ms. Pat Daniel from Big Brother, Big Sisters here as well. So thank you for being here this evening and gracing us with your presence. This resolution is for you guys, keeping the lights on after-school proclamation. Virginia, at the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Board Business Meeting, Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, the following proclamation was adopted. Whereas the citizens of Pennsylvania County stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe and engaging learning experiences that help children realize their full potential and support their academic growth and well-being. They support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive when they are out of their classrooms. They help address key issues in our communities such as school absenteeism, learning loss recovery, and workforce development. They also build stronger communities by involving students, parents, businesses, and volunteers in the lives of young people. They also, let's see, after-school provides a solid return on investment. Every $1 invested in the after-school program saves at least $3 by increasing kids' earning potential and improving kids' performance at school and reduces crime and juvenile delinquency. Whereas after-school programs provide critical support for children and youth, offering them new experiences and opportunities along with hands-on learning that help them lead to learn and grow. Youth who attend after-school programs attend school more often, do better in the school, and gain important work and life skills. These supports are the more, are more important today than ever. Whereas the Dan River Region Out-of-School Time Network is committed to education and well-being of our youth and recognizes that quality after-school programs prepare our children to become successful adults and help our community thrive. And whereas Lights On After School, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October 23rd, 2025, promote the importance of quality after-school programs for our children, families, and communities. Whereas the demand for after-school programs continue to grow for every child in a program for waiting to get in. And whereas many after-school programs face operating challenges to serve that they are forced to consider closing their doors and turning off their lights. Whereas Pennsylvania County is committed to providing expanded learning opportunities to help our children learn, grow, and develop the skills essential for success in life and work. Therefore, the board does hereby proclaim October 23rd, 2025, as Lights On After School Day and be it further resolved that the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors enthusiastically endorses Lights On After School and commits our community to engage in innovative after-school programs and activities that ensure lights stay on and the doors stay open for all children after school. Given under my hand is 21st day of October in the year of our Lord, 2025, Robert M. Tucker, Jr., Board Chair, Kayla McCluster, Clerk.
Thank you so much, Chairman. The United Way of Danville, Pennsylvania County Board of Directors. As part of its strategic vision and commitment to achieving long-term collaborative impact on access to childcare through pioneering, community-driven solutions in Danville and Pennsylvania County, the board recognizes that quality childcare is essential not only for the well-being of children and families but as a cornerstone of workforce participation and economic development for the region. In alignment with this priority, United Way has launched Dan River Region Out-of-School Time Network in partnership with Danville Regional Foundation. This initiative was born from a growing awareness of the intersection between access to childcare and the critical role out-of-school time programs serving, supporting families. The network's goal is and purpose is to foster stronger communication and relationships among local stakeholders, promote shared cooperation, learning, and coordinated action. We warmly invite you to participate, contribute, and spread the word. Together, we can build a stronger support system for children, families, and the future of our community. Thank you.
You're so welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go take it out.
All right, this is a group presentation here. So I want to welcome all the Chatham High School Girls Soccer Team to the podium, please. Come on up here. And the coaches. And Mark Shields. And Mr. Mayhew. Come on in here. That's half the people that attended tonight. This is great. This is a great group here tonight. So Mark Shields was the one that alerted me to this, and it's a great event that we're doing tonight because the Chatham High School Girls Team did a great job this past year, and I wanted to make sure that they got recognized at this. So with that further ado, the Excellence, Certificate of Excellence is presented to the Chatham High School Girls Soccer Team. They had a phenomenal 2025 season marked by historic achievements and unwavering dedication with an outstanding overall record of 16, 2, and 1. In an undefeated regular season, the Lady Cavaliers showcased exceptional skill, teamwork, and determination, making Pennsylvania County history as the first soccer team ever to advance to the Virginia High School League State Tournament. The team also earned the titles of Region 2C runner-up and back-to-back Dogwood District Champions. Your remarkable accomplishments this season have brought immense pride to Chatham High School and the entire community, exemplifying the power of hard work, perseverance, and unity. The Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors proudly extends its deepest congratulations and admiration to the Chatham High School Girls Soccer Team for these historic achievements and wishes you continued success in the seasons ahead. Given this 21st day of October, 2025, Kenneth L. Bowman, Chatham Blairs District Supervisor, and Robert M. Tucker, Jr., Chairman. And now a word from Mark Shields. Keep it short. I'm just kidding.
Mr. Whittle already yielded his three minutes to me from late on till now. I appreciate that, Mr. Whittle. Thank you for yielding that time to me. It's an honor to be here tonight as a 1992 graduate of Chatham High School and a proponent of soccer for the last 20 years. This is quite an honor. I'd like to thank Mr. Bowman. I called him a couple of months ago, and he jumped right on it. We was going to do it last month. It was such a heavy agenda, we decided to wait till this month. But I appreciate his willingness to jump on this and see the accomplishment as I did. When you're in the eye of something, a lot of times you overlook it until a little later on. And what I mean by that, I sit on the sidelines still with these girls. I coached nine years at Chatham in soccer, and I sit, still sit on the sidelines and root them on. And we got a couple of months past the season, and like a lightning bolt went off in my head and said, wait a minute, we just made states. So I got to reaching back out to Mark Parrish, Craig Saunders, people that have been coaching in high school ranks longer than I did. And I said, got some of the A.D.s to look up and find out, no other time had a soccer program made to state rounds. So these girls did something for the first time in history. And anytime that is accomplished, I always think it's good to honor that. The program has moved forward in leaps and bounds over the last five, six years. Coach Norris has done a great job. Over the last three, four seasons, we've had three girls to go on and play soccer in college, and we have never had that before. So we just appreciate him and the efforts of Jerry Doughty, Libby Boone. You won't find a better staff, you know, staff that cares more for the girls. So I'm going to pretty much end it there other than saying, Southside Soccer, there's three of us up here that are board members at Southside. And I want to once again thank this board. Thank you guys for selling us for a big sum of $1, the land behind the old Blair's Middle School. That's the home of Southside Soccer. They saw the investment. We've been there for over 22 years and doing that. And we've done a lot of renovations. I probably have you guys out. We are totally remodeling the old clubhouse that overlooked. It was a football press box. We in another stage of that and really taking and being good stewards of what you give us. But a lot of the products of what you see today is through a program like that that has 550 to 650 kids from age of two to 15 playing two times a year. So if it was not for the backing of this board and Southside Soccer, I didn't, I don't see soccer as being a vital, a vibrant part of our county. So I want to thank Southside Soccer as well. But ladies, congratulations. It's only one first ever, and y'all were the first to do it, so congratulations. I would like to ask the Athletic Director, Bo Cass, to come up and say a few words.
Yeah, on behalf of Chatham High School, thank you for having us this evening. I am Bo Cass, Athletic and Activities Director. I just wanted to speak to these girls and this coach for a second. There's a lot of talent in front of you. They won a lot of games, but to be completely honest with you, I don't think that's the thing that most of us as administrators are most proud of. The girls you see before you are some of the best students we have in the school, some of the best grades, some of the best attendance, some of the best college experience. Some of them have moved on to college already. So I'm extremely proud and thankful to Coach Norris, not for just winning games, and we may never reach that high watermark again of a state tournament, and that's okay. It was a phenomenal achievement for this year, but the way that Coach Norris has, is going to carry forward in teaching these girls and developing our Chatham High School students is, I think, what is most important. So come see us this year. They'll be back on the field. A lot of these girls will be back on the field this spring, hopefully winning some games. But beyond that, we're building some good kids at Chatham High School. So come see us, and we're really thankful for everything Coach Norris has done.
That brings us down to General Presentations, 8A. Let's see, Hearing of the Citizens, item number nine. Each person addressing the board under Hearing of the Citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during the Hearing of the Citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the Citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that is signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Madam Clerk, who's our first speaker, please?
James Galden.
Good evening, sir.
My name is James Galden. I live at 6981 Dry Fork Road. I'm here concerning the theory, the thought of all those trucks running up and down the highway, down that little narrow road, somebody's going to get hurt. We need more presence of police down there, deputy sheriffs, state troopers. They need to write tickets. I pick trash up out of my yard every day where the contractors, that's these little duly trucks that's got the trailers behind them, throws it out. And I'm sure that everybody else does too. But nobody else wants to come up here and voice their opinion except me. And I don't know what to say about it, except to point something has got to be done. If the supervisors can't do it, notify me, and I will get Channel 13 up there, and they'll do something about it. Does that sound like a woman? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dalton. Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Jeff Love.
Mr. Love, good evening. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. Jeff Love, Stanton River District. I had a prior commitment during the September 16th, 2025 presentation by Line and Grade regarding the Comprehensive Plan Update Project. However, I did take the time to review the video from that meeting. During that meeting, Line and Grade mentioned the importance of community engagement during the update process, including community members at large and advisory committee. To date, neither Line and Grade nor the board have developed a way for community members to express their interest in being involved in this process. It's essential that the community is properly represented and involved in the Comprehensive Plan Update since it impacts everyone in Pennsylvania County. The request for community involvement needs to be well-publicized. The ability to participate needs to be easily accessible to any interested county citizen. The ability to participate needs to be easily accessible to any interested county citizen. Previously, the board hired the Berkeley Group to modify the accounting zoning ordinance. The zoning update public hearing and approval was delayed from January twenty twenty-five to August twenty twenty-five and now appears to be indefinitely delayed. Neither the Berkeley Group nor the board properly requested community involvement, which is part of why the proposal was a failure. The Berkeley Group did not use proper procedures with the zoning update proposal, and as such, the process was a waste of taxpayer dollars. The board should have started with the comprehensive plan update prior to the zoning update since the two are intrinsically connected. I strongly encourage the board to properly and actively solicit community involvement in any major project that affects all county property owners, including the comprehensive plan update and the zoning ordinance update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Mr. Cluster, who's our next speaker?
Vanessa Scares.
Scares, good evening, welcome.
Good evening. I am Vanessa Scares, and I live in the Westover District. So tonight, I did not bring any prepared comments with me. What's on my heart tonight is just to share with you the increase in respect that I have for each and every one seating before me and behind me that has ever run a campaign. Running a campaign is hard work, and I have a greatest respect for each and every one of you, as I said. Running two campaigns in one year is definitely hard work. So I just wanna say again, I respect each and every one of you. I wanted to publicly thank all the volunteers, that everybody that has come up for me, um, in my race for treasurer of Pennsylvania County, all the volunteers, they're so valuable. I don't have to tell you all how valuable the volunteers are. So I just wanted to publicly thank everyone that has worked at the registrar's office ever since September nineteenth for me. There's too many to mention, but my, my heart is just so full of the support that I've been receiving, and it's just been a great experience so far. It's been ninety-five percent positive and encouraging, and I, I think that, you know, if you have run what I consider to be a successful campaign, which means a clean campaign and you won, I just want to admonish you once again and say thank you for all you do for the community. Uh, want each and every citizen that's listening to go out and encourage people to get involved, run campaigns. I, I know the best way to run is unopposed, but opposition is a sign of a healthy community, and it would be good for more people to be trained on how to do campaigns and to actually get involved, get some younger people involved. If you don't have a plan for that as supervisors, I think it'd be great to do that. And also encourage people to get out the vote. Just come on out and vote in Pennsylvania County. We're two weeks out, and so please, please vote. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Cluster?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
That's it? Thank you so much. We will, well, let me ask, is anyone here that did not sign up that wishes to speak? All right, thank you so much. We'll move to item ten A, rezoning public hearings pursuant to Article Five, Division Six of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance. The board of supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. All right, uh, Mr. Arnold. Case R dash twenty-five dash zero two one.
Case R dash two-five dash zero two one. Juan Lopez has petitioned to rezone point seven acres located on State Road six thirty-four, Blue Ridge Drive in the Stanton River Election District from double zone to R one residential suburban subdivision district to allow for the placement of a single-family dwelling on the property. Once the property is rezoned to R one, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash two twenty-two are permitted. On September second, twenty twenty-five, the planning commission recommended by a seven to zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. I'm not sure if Mr. Lopez is here to represent the petition, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have regarding this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Seven thirty-one, we open the public hearing. Uh, is Mr. Lopez here? Is anyone here to represent, speak? Seven thirty-one, we effectively closed the case. Mr. Dudley is here. Would someone pinch hit for him, please?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Height.
Case R dash twenty-five dash zero two one, Juan Lopez of rezoning, uh, make a motion and be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Height. Support?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Moving up with second, we would rezone Mr. Lopez's property. Gentlemen, cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. All right, case R dash twenty-five zero dash twenty-two. Mr. Arnold.
Case R dash two-five dash zero two-two, Joanne Atkinson has petitioned to rezone point five acres located on U.S. Highway twenty-nine in the Chatham Blair's Election District from R one residential suburban subdivision district to B two business district general to allow for a hair salon on the property. Once the property is rezoned to B two, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash three sixty-five are permitted. On September second, twenty twenty-five, the planning commission recommended by a seven to zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Joanne Atkinson is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, sir. Seven thirty-three, we open the public hearing. Ms. Atkinson, anything ahead? Where is she? Right here? Anything ahead? Thank you, ma'am. Seven thirty-three, closed public hearing. Let's see, Mr. Bowman, your pleasure.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In case R dash twenty-five dash zero two-two, make a motion to approve the rezoning of point five oh acres from R one residential sub- suburban subdivision district to B two business district general to allow for a hair salon.
I'll second it.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your votes. All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you so very kindly. All right, we move now to ten B, other public hearings. You're welcome. Have a good evening. Each person addressing the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district, and his or her place of residence for non-county citizens in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to ten minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time unless the consent of the board is affirmatively given to extend the speakers a lot of time. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up to speak. All right, public hearing. Ms. Van De Heid, thank you.
Tonight's public hearing is to, um, consider the appropriation of three point seven five seven four hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-five cent of funds. Um, this is as a result of a bond that we recently financed through the Virginia pooled financing program back in August. We were able to, um, appro- or estimate how much we were gonna borrow back during the budget process. We actually closed on a total amount of seven million nine thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-three cent, but we had already previously appropriated three point two million dollars in the current FY twenty-six budget, leaving a remaining balance of three million seven hundred fifty-seven thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-five cent. And so tonight's public hearing is being held because that amount does exceed our one percent threshold that requires a public hearing to add these funds to our budget.
Thank you, Ms. Van De Heid. At, uh, seven thirty-six, we open the public hearing. Anyone signed up to speak, Ms. McCluster?
No, sir.
All right, seven thirty-six, we effectively closed the public hearing. All right, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve an appropriation of three million seven hundred fifty-seven dollars, three million seven hundred fifty-seven four hundred twelve thousand dollars thirty-five cent to the capital improvements fund as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Height. All right, moving up with second, we approve that amount of money, uh, while Mr. Bowman is getting his commas and decimal straightened out. Any discussion? All in favor of said motion, cast your vote. All right, thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Evans, am I missing anything, or are we actually on unfinished business?
You're doing great, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any unfinished business? Any new business? All right, any matters from the work session? Matters from the work session? Board members report. We're gonna start with Mr. Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and since, uh, Mr. Whittle deferred his comments to, uh, to Mark, uh, I, I don't guess I get but just three minutes? So I went to the Tobacco Commission reception at VRR Gretchen Blair Clark, which Tim Clark's wife, was recognized for her time spent at the commission as her term came to an end on June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, also attended the Chamber Candidate Forum, and a reminder to everybody out there that early voting is still ongoing and the election is November fourth, so get out there and vote. Uh, attended the ribbon cutting over in Danville at Panda Express, great turnout over there and great food, if y'all haven't tried it. Uh, attended the Chamber Business After Hours at the Hargrave President's Home, well-attended, and if you haven't had a chance to go meet the president of Hargrave, um, great, great person there. Attended the Farm Bureau Dinner recently, uh, attended the Hall of Fame induction ceremony. Congratulations to the following people, Ed Fulton, Vic Hall, Martin Pounds, Mark Shield, Howard West, Aubrey Myers, and Brenda Bowman. Uh, great turnout, we had about a hundred and fifty people at the Hall of Fame banquet. Thanks to the Beautification Committee, they met last night, to all those that participated in the fall cleanup, was held the week of sixth through eleventh, October. Over eighty citizens participated and filled approximately fifty bags of trash, and I wanna thank Jay Craddock, he was here earlier today, for all the work that the crews have done along Route forty-one and the Mount Herman area. It's been years and coming, but they had crews out there that were doing the edging and cleaning up those sidewalks and curb and gutter, and it looks great out there. So thank you, Jay, for all that work. And on a final note, uh, at the NASCAR Truck Race in Martinsville this Friday at six P.M., our daughter Lindsay will be singing the National Anthem, so tune into that if you can. Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Whittle.
Yeah, well, just wanna say, um, thanks for everybody that came out tonight. Thanks for, um, all the staff, what you do, and just, um, appreciate what everybody's doing, man. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dalton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Yeah, again, I'd like to say thanks to all the staff, uh, had a great meeting tonight, been a long meeting, but it's been great. Um, thanks for everybody coming out tonight, um, and this is gonna back up a little bit in September, but I think it was the last week of September was Farm Safety Week. So just be careful when you're out there on the roads, you got a lot of farmers out there working, trying to get their crops in, a lot of big equipment, and these little narrow roads, it kinda hard to get two cars on a well, well on a big piece of equipment. So be safe in your travels and just be patient, take your time, and they'll, they'll soon get out your way. And with that, uh, everybody have a safe trip home, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, uh, several things, uh, coming up on November the seventh, uh, I'll celebrate forty years of marriage, so I need to say it now before I forget. But, uh, anyway, this past weekend, uh, my graduating class at Tunstall High School, we celebrated fifty years. Uh, it's hard to believe that. Uh, also attended the Farm Bureau Event, which is always a wonderful event. It's, um, some real heroes in there, folks who may be living, uh, moving dirt. Um, you know, we've had a trooper and one of our public safety vehicles, uh, involved in crashes. They were hit from behind by a, a distracted motorist, and so this brings to mind the slowdown and move of the law. A lot of people don't get it, just like the cell phones, you just don't understand. You can't drive talking on a phone, and if you see an emergency vehicle, you're required by law, if you can, move into the left lane and slow down. And thankfully, the trooper that was hit, he, uh, got both his legs femur broken, but he, uh, is in rehab in Roanoke right now. Uh, fifteen years ago, we lost Sheriff Taylor McGregor, the man that hired Bill April the first, nineteen seventy-nine. Some thought that was a joke, being April's the first, but it wasn't, it was true. Um, this past October twelfth, uh, we remember the attack on the USS Cole, and one of our native sons, Timothy Saunders, lost his life, as well as seventeen, sixteen other sailors, and a total of thirty-six, uh, additional sailors were injured. Um, October thirteenth, uh, the Navy celebrated two hundred and fifty years of service, and on the eighteenth of September, my Air Force celebrated seventy-eight years of service. Uh, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and so, uh, having that in mind, I always encourage people to reach out to Danville Pennsylvania Cancer. If you live in the area, Danville, Pennsylvania County, and you have any kind of cancer, all you have to do is apply, and I appealed my board members to help me spread the word because there's so many people that don't know that that organization exists, and I'm a lifetime member, we could go up to five hundred dollars per month, anything cancer-related, including lodging, travel, et cetera, um, and it's way too much of that. Little Wyatt Ashworth is having a fundraiser tonight, he's a little fella that suffered from a brain tumor, and, uh, Ms. Eastwood at Tunstall High School, um, you know, young lady, she is still fighting cancer as well. The Danville Ice Haven Crew, uh, this year celebrates eighty years of service, eighty years, it's hard to believe, nineteen forty-five to twenty twenty-five. And finally, our colleague and friend Lee Vogler came home from the hospital today, and he is currently at a city council meeting as we speak, so that truly was an answered prayer, and, um, he calls the city a comeback, uh, city, but he is truly the comeback kid. And with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. All right, Mr. Height.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight, uh, congratulate the Chatham High School Girl Soccer Team, that's quite an accomplishment. First, first team to qualify for states in the county, so that, that's an accomplishment. I'd like to thank all those volunteers that work our youth sports leagues, that, that instill values into our children. It is appreciated, and I do appreciate all those folks that give their time to, to make our kids have opportunities to get out here, not to just play sports, but to grow as human beings, to learn sportsmanship. I can honestly say, when I grew up at school, Field Rec Center, playing for the John Daniel Braves every year, we always won the best sportsmanship award 'cause we never won a game. But we would always shake hands after getting the snot beat out of us, and I do appreciate those lessons that I learned as a child on the ballfield about, it's not about winning and losing, it's about participating, and it's about being good sports and learning to be a person of good character. Uh, like to thank Mr. Shorter, Mr. Evans, and our staff for all the work you do. Uh, I, I don't know how many people got to read the letter that Mr. Shorter wrote a few weeks ago. I know Mr. Ingram shared it on his Facebook page. If you haven't read that letter, I encourage you to go out to our county website, read that. that letter, very encouraging, that's what we need. We need encouragement from leaders, and our leadership needs to encourage, and I, I'm so thankful that we have such a positive attitude in the county right now, looking forward, moving to continue to grow. I look forward to what this board and whoever serves on this board come January, the, the work that has been started will be continued to move this county forward. Like to thank everyone for being here tonight, have a wonderful evening, and before I close, a personal note, I'd like to wish my sister, Tammy Sexton, she had celebrated her sixty-seventh birthday yesterday, so appreciate all she's done for me in my life, kept me out of quite a few fights on the school bus, because she ended up getting in them for me. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Height. Listen, from the desk of the chairman, I, I wanna echo all of the sentiments that has been expressed by my colleagues, I, I don't know that I can add anything to it. I wanna just personally thank the staff for doing all the heavy lifting and preparing all these documents for these meetings and what have you. Thank you, Mr. Shorter, for your leadership right now, and that you're providing to the actual staff itself. Mr. Evans, thank you, sir, you have always kept me between the guardrails, that's important. And, and I want to just encourage people to exercise your constitutional right to go out there on November the fourth and make sure you vote, because elections have consequences. Now, I can't tell you from this position who to vote for, but I can tell you that it matters when the rubber meets the road, as we, you know, it's kinda like football, you watch the Monday night football, you watch football all day on Sunday, all day on Saturday. Coach can draw up an excellent play, but the players on the field, if they can't execute it, he's still not putting any points on the board. So the question is, who do you want to have as your coach? Not just the seat that I sit in, but we want to be able to move, and we're doing the groundwork, and laying the groundwork now, to actually move this county forward, and, you know, and that's gonna require, you know, our best and our brightest to be out there strategically thinking, okay? So I'm begging all of the citizens of Pennsylvania County to make sure that you exercise your right to vote, and you have some sense of awareness in terms of who you're actually voting for, okay? And with that, Mr. Shorter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank the board for, for all that you do, and that allowed me to serve citizens as well, and like to thank the staff that supports me, that allows me to, to move this county forward, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Evans?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure to be part of the process, the future is bright, let's carry on.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.